...your order and we start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, this meeting has been properly posted in the normal posting places. And the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, do we have...
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. All in favor that say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Okay, we've got the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of Monday, May 22nd, I'm sorry, 29th at 6:30. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Are there any additions, corrections? Okay, all in favor then say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion's carried. We've got the financial report and bill listing.
Okay. Uh, voucher listed for May 23rd through June 20th, 2018 from general funds payroll. Check number 553705 for $196.00. Direct deposit numbers 90004672 through 900046890 for $137,303.79. Uh, then direct deposits numbers 900046891 through 900047000 for $104,700. $165.39. Then wire transfers for payroll liabilities. Numbers 201700392 through 201700402 for $70,437.30. For a total payroll of $355,102.72. Next, our accounts payable. Checks numbers 52992 through 53028 for $93,963.37. Next, AP wire transfer number 201700391 for $147.30. Next, we have credit card transactions. First number 521 for $27,463.22. Next, number 5292018 for $3,691.46. Next, ACH direct deposit numbers 171800180 through 171800195 for $2,968.23. For a total accounts payable of $128,233.58 for total disbursements of $483,336.30. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Approve the financial report and bill listing. Are there any questions? In all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion's carried. Sue and Mark, you want to address us at all? Uh, this would be the area that you could speak to us.
Okay, um, I just want to... Yeah, I just want to request that...
Nope.
Request that I have your support. Um, I would very much like to, um, continue teaching for kindergarten in the district. Been working here for 15 years. And I sent you a letter. I don't know if you received or not this afternoon. Just kind of stating it. So, I appreciate your support.
Thank you. Okay, uh, I was hoping anyone else is here, so we do have any more delegations to be heard. So we are on to administrative report. You've got donations.
Yep, so we'd like to present, uh, three different donations and, uh, very, very thankful for the Kohl's Cares donation, a thousand dollars, which is designated to the third grade field trip to Discovery World. Um, Mary Iwanski also sought out and received, uh, four grants, basically. Uh, three of them for the primary school for $3,000 and intermediate school received $1,000 grant. Um, those will go towards the STEM program, um, ultimately for Maker Space for the primary school. And that thousand dollars will go towards robotics elective and coding elective and things like that for fifth and sixth grade. Uh, then the Strattmeyer family donated $400 for the band program, uh, for allowing us to borrow the Batuba. And so, instead of carrying it back and forth, we let them have one at home. So, uh, they thought that was very kind of them, so they gave us $400. So, uh, a big thank you to the Strattmeyer family. So just looking to, uh, approve the donations as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the donations as presented. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Any questions, concerns? In all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion's carried. We're on to personnel actions.
Sure. Uh, for new personnel actions, uh, it is, uh, we'd like to present, uh, Mrs. Sarah Phillips' contract to, uh, replace Shelley Brown moving from 5K to 4K. So, uh, again, uh, Sarah had been with the district in the three maternity leaves and been a substitute teacher for us. Uh, so we would like to, uh, the administration is just looking for a motion to approve the individual contract for Sarah Phillips.
I'll make a motion to approve the individual teaching contract for Sarah Phillips as presented. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Are there any questions, concerns? In all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion's carried. Okay, we're on to information.
Okay, so it was a great end of the school year and obviously we're just preparing for the start of the, uh, 18-19 school year. So a lot of things happening this summer. Uh, basically whether we grant writing or pursuing some curriculum reviews and things like that. Ton of things going on at summer schools in our first session. This is the last week of our first session. Uh, I think we are up a little bit more than we were last year. Um, we are offering a new camp this year, which is theater camp. Uh, and we, uh, filled that up fairly quickly. We have 53 students, I do believe, participated in a, uh, theater camp. So sponsored by the, uh, Merton Theater Club. So, uh, nice little opportunity, but also continuing to bolster our summer school enrollment, which is fun and it will culminate actually at the primary school where there's a performance at four o'clock on Friday. So that's kind of the next big event here for the district coming up. So, um, other than that, we're just business as usual. Facility projects and cleaning is in full mode and, uh, just getting ready for, uh, the start of the 18-19 school year. So pretty soon that open house on September 4th is going to come really quick. It always does, so.
Okay, we're on to committee reports. We have the finance committee.
Absolutely. Um, the finance committee, we met on June 19th and the first item we went over was some food service updates. Um, I shared with the committee that on May 3rd, we did have charpols come in and actually use an, uh, sheet of paper called the Smarter Lunchroom Scorecard. And basically they evaluated what is currently happening here at our intermediate school. What the lines look like, what the marketing looks like. Um, and then based off of how it rated on the scorecard, then they created a recommendation for some new marketing for next year. And, uh, they came up with a lot of great suggestions. Um, some of it was signage, just to increase participation. So students know ahead of time what's happening the next day. Um, some of it was some of the utensils that we're currently using, um, making those look a little bit better. Um, the major recommendation had to do with a cooler. They're looking, um, to have us purchase an open air cooler. Right now ours has a door that the children have to use to access the food inside. That takes time away from them and it's not very large. The open air cooler, they've had really great success over at Harton on the side. Um, they have one there and that has really helped. So all of this is kind of looking to help bolster participation. Overall though, throughout this entire school year, the participation had increased every month as, uh, the students became more familiar with the program. So we're happy with how Charpols has been doing and, uh, we're looking forward to next year and making some improvements with some taste testing. We really want to hit, um, children with that. Um, we're going to be asking some of the wellness committee, um, to help with that. Some of the parents to come in and help do those taste testings and get feedback because obviously the lunch staff doesn't have a lot of time during lunch hour to do that. So there's a lot of great ideas that they've been putting together. Um, it's been a full group. It's based, um, from a nutritionist from their side. They have their marketing person, uh, Logan from the food service, and then their district manager has all been in this process. So they're really trying to make it as profitable for us as possible, which is a very goal. So, um, anything else to add on?
So just looking for some enhancements. We're going to be moving forward. It is a Fund 50 expenditure.
Right.
So, um, it is, we, we are, and we'll get a report next month on kind of the finalization of the year for food service. But, uh, it was profitable this year, um, for several different reasons and we'll get into that in July. But, uh, so we're just looking to kind of do some investing in the program, hopefully get a greater return and sell more lunches and quick stuff. And, uh, just be responsive to some of the survey data that we've gotten too. So, um, we'll, we'll go through those recommendations, sit down with them. And ultimately, like Sherry and I talked about, we're not going to, the $600 for wavy hands. You're going to have to do more to convince me that that's going to bolster participation. So that'll probably be a lot of the, the, the line. But I guess we just wanted to showcase some of the, uh, their recommendations and some of the highlights of the work that's going to be happening, uh, later this, uh, this fall as school reasons sell.
All right. Next, uh, we went over some of the school fees for next year. I, um, prepared spreadsheet that compared what some of the other districts are offering, other theater schools and Arrowhead. And, um, also I showed our history. We haven't had an increase in the past two years. So we're looking for a $5 increase from, um, 5K through eighth grade. And then we're looking for about a $4.50 increase in 4K. Um, a lot of this has to do with some of the new curriculum. We have a new hand writing curriculum. They require special pencils. So there's additional costs that we're going to be investing there. And then also some of the new electus, there's going to be some additional costs. And those are consumable items that the children will be using at the school day. And then there was also a request for an increase in the athletic fee by $5 up to $75. And overall, um, Merton is right in the pack, a little bit lower. And I believe its four other theater schools are already offering $75 fee they were collecting for this past school year. So, um, we're just going to go to become a little bit more on track with them and what's going on.
Typically, we've stayed up to date with AMSAC. When I say AMSAC, our conference, but also MAA, their registration fee is $80 for fitting the sixth grade basketball. So we're not at 80, we just can't, don't need to jump there yet.
Did we increase the maximum per family per year athletic fee when we increased the individual athletic fee?
No, I did not increase that. It's at 210 right now. Yes.
We can, we can move that to 225. We probably go five per... Right, if you're going to have three, we go 225.
I changed that. Okay. Um, so if there's any questions, I know later on the board will be voting on or discussing and deciding what you guys want to do with that. Um, then the other thing that we discussed were some of the proposed food service fees for next year. And for that, we're, um, asking those to remain the same as this prior year for all the food service, except for the 4K milk program. On that one, we're actually losing money. It's set right now at 10 cents a carton. And actual cost for a carton of milk is at 22 cents per carton. So, um, we're looking to increase that. Um, and of course, it's something that you guys can discuss again, but just sort of making it so that we're not losing money on it. All right. Um, and then, see, the last thing. Oh, we just, I have a brief update on our collections. Um, we've spent a lot of time, Mary Beth in our business office and I, we worked on really getting those, uh, straightened out this year. Um, they hadn't been done for a couple of years. So we cleaned up those books and then we also did start collecting from families who were delinquent within the last year. Um, so that has been going well. And, um, we also did a real push this year with the eighth grade families, or students in eighth grade who were going to be leaving the district to make sure that they knew what their fees were. Sending the statements on a monthly basis and, uh, really communicating a lot, trying to get those fees. Um, Mary Beth, uh, has collected over $1,200 in fees that we never would have gotten from, uh, families who've already left the district. So we made a real good push on that and we're really pleased with some of the results.
And we did refer some families to collections.
Yes, and we did refer some families to collections. They weren't for small dollar amounts. They were about a hundred dollars or more. There were some families that had $600 out there. So, you know, it's pretty significant amounts of money out there. And I think, I think it was about $3,500 I referred over to collections.
And that doesn't cost us anything.
It doesn't cost us anything. If they do collect the money, then they charge us a fee on the amount that they actually collected.
Thank you, Sherry.
Okay, we're on to new business. We have the final review of the play handbook. An action item.
Yep, so again, this is something, this is our final reading, uh, to prepare for July first. And, uh, just, uh, we've, uh, had these changes out there for, you know, about two months now. So just looking for a motion to approve the, uh, 2018-19 handbook as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2018-19 handbook as presented. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor then say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
I'll stand.
One of them said, okay, we are on to the 2018-19 teacher contracts.
Sure. Yep, so, uh, attached to the list of teacher contracts for the 2018-19 school year for our returning staff. Um, all full-time contracts are to be renewed as they were not renewed per state statute 11822. Um, the only individual who has chosen not to sign her contract, uh, was Melanie Von Toomey. Uh, Melanie presented her letter of resignation this past week and, uh, we wish Melanie, and so I'll thank her for her four years of service to the district. Like to thank her, uh, as you can see her letter of resignation. So theory of that's why it's here is because it is a returning contract. She technically just pulled her contract there. So, um, the administration is recommending the board approve the 2018-19 teacher contracts as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2018-2019 teacher contracts as presented. Yep, here's a motion. Uh, that's the first motion. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
My discussion would be to, um, amend that list and add, um, Sue Barrell on as full-time employee for the district.
Teaching what?
4K.
So your proposal would be to have Shelley stay in 5K?
The, the administration would shift Shelley Brown back to 5K.
What do we think, how do we think that will impact, um, maybe let me start that question over. Um, part of the plan in the organization was mixing up, uh, the grade level groups to foster greatness.
Academic excellence, curiosity.
Yeah, some of that. How do we think that would impact if we left 4K, the 4K team as it was? And now actually 5K would now have two people remaining, staying there, right? Cause Melanie resigned. So that, you know, in terms of amount of new people in a team, that one is what it would have been anyway, ideally. Well, but theoretically if Melanie hadn't retired, there were, or hadn't resigned, there would have been two new people there anyway.
As opposed to if we leave it, if we leave it with the other.
Well, I mean, Sarah's taught that.
Well, Sarah, Sarah would be a new contract employee, correct? But Sarah and then Crystal's.
I, I meant.
Yeah, there'd be two.
I meant, yeah. So anyway, um, so we're kind of, you know, at parity for 5K in terms of new blood in the team. But then 4K is the same team as last year. So just, you know, the idea was shifting people around to foster academic excellence.
Correct. The, the goal was to move a 5K teacher down to 4K.
Sure.
That was our goal and that's what we did in our original staffing plan.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, correct.
Um, so, uh, do we have ideas on how we could leverage, um, you know, the, the 5K people that we have, even just in terms of doing more cross, or inter-team things between 5K and 4K in this coming year to help facilitate some of that rejuvenation that we were hoping to get by moving people around? Does that make sense?
Yes, we would, we would have to do, do more of that concerted effort. We certainly would. Um, it would happen more naturally, having a, a team member there every day, uh, through those collaborative times as well. So, um, we would have to make a more concerted effort because the goal was to take a 5K experienced teacher and bring them to 4K where on the daily basis, all of that collaboration that happens daily, um, it would be right there in the present. So that, that was the reason for, you know, second to first, second to third, that entire shift. So that collaboration as well as that expertise of differentiation and idea creation could happen naturally, daily. Instead of, hey, if it's team meeting time or whatever it might be, so.
So if we were to keep it how was previously discussed, not to what Katie said, it would mean there are three new people in 5K.
Possibly. The administration talked today.
How many, four teachers?
Well, there would be, yes and no, but the administration, Mike and I discussed today, that if we stay underneath the proposed administrative plan, we would search, we would actually bring first grade and, um, first grade as well as 5K together for the interview team. And interview people who, and we would be looking for experience, experienced in our curriculums and things like that. And then from there, we would decide where would that person fit best, whether it be in first grade or 5K. If it was in, if it was in first grade, we would take the individual who got moved to first grade, move them back down to 5K.
But still you're facing the chance of three new teachers.
Correct. We, correct.
Also Sarah Phillips, who was, you know, previously, we just, she taught half the school year in 5K.
She has had two long-term, two maternity subs. Correct. She's had two 5K substitute, long-term maternity, one of which was at the beginning of the school year. So, um, when we looked at her, she was not considered, we wouldn't consider her a brand new teacher to our organization. She knows the teams. She's collaborated with every one of those team members. And actually the individual who came down from first grade to 5K, she worked with that for 12 weeks too as well on long-term maternity leave.
So, I mean, it's, she's new, obviously in terms of employment, but she's got experience doing that class, you know, that grade level.
Correct. When Mike and I were talking, Mike and I were not concerned about another new individual because we already have someone who's so familiar with the organization.
So where we're at, okay. Don't let you speak, then I just want to show where we're at.
Sure. Uh, I was just going to ask, um, this may or may not be true, but it's been my perception that, uh, going from 4K to 5K, um, yeah, obviously you, you, you organize the classes, right? You do this every year. And it's been my perception that the classroom that Shelley has taught for 5K has been, you know, some of the kids that haven't done, that didn't do 4K or some of the kids that, that, well, I, maybe I won't even say that. I'll say, um, is there, do we think we'll be missing something bringing her back down to 4K? Obviously she used to teach 4K and was doing 5K for the last couple of years. Uh, in terms of more of the early childhood stuff because we're not having, she does have some 4K experience.
Who's this? Shelley?
Shelley.
Shelley's got the, the 4K.
So not having that in 5K, do we feel we'll be missing something there or we'll be able to compensate for that?
You mean, I'm not sure I understand.
Previously my question was, is 4K going to miss something if we don't bring her down because she has 5K experience? Now my question is, is 5K missing something because there's no 4K experience?
No, we, we talked as an administrative team and when we were discussing our staffing plan, we felt that it wasn't necessary to move a 4K skilled teacher at 4K to 5K. We didn't feel that we were missing anything. No.
Okay, motion that's on the floor. If we vote aye to the motion that's on the floor, that eliminates Sue Barrell.
I, I guess what I would say is, is we would interview, look for a 5K or first grade teacher. We will, if we cannot find the ideal candidate, then we would go, I, I would, I would go back to the drawing board and then take a look at our staffing plan and then ultimately, I would then approach Sue and see if she wanted to come on back. But we're not going to settle. We will not settle for now. Guess we don't have to.
If we, uh, so we did, that's where the motion is on the floor right now. Is that the desire of the board to go forward and vote on that motion?
So if we go forward and vote on that motion?
I would, I would move forward with a vote and see if there's enough votes to carry the motion possibly, unless you want to kill the motion.
I just want...
Even though, so even though my motion was to...
Well, we had a motion in a second and you were asking to amend it, but the, the amendment has to be made.
You, you started a conversation to make people think about stuff and now we need to vote on the original motion. And then we would be able to, depending what happened, you'd be able to make a second motion as your amended version. So this is parliamentary nonsense.
It's just perceived right now as perceived.
Okay, are, are we ready to, very more discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that motion failed. You want to introduce a motion?
I would like to make a motion to add Sue Barrell to the 2018-19 teacher contracts as the 4K teacher, um, doubling her salary from last year at 50% with the new salary being $54,761.85.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor then say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion's carried.
Welcome back.
Thanks, guys. Whoa.
A long way to get there, but we got there. Okay, we are on to student fees, an action item. We have the administrative recommendation and I think we, uh, you added a little bit to it.
We will, we will make, uh, we will raise up the, uh, the.
Family max.
A lot of the family max for athletics to be in activities, activity night athletes, to be $225.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2018-19 school fees and lunch fees with the amendment that the family maximum activity fee can change to $225 per family.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor then say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion's carried. Okay, we are on to future meetings and agendas.
27:30.
Sorry, Phil. I think, I should apologize. I don't know. Uh, so when we look at July, what, uh, on, on the agenda for, for July, um, you know, there's not much. It's going to be a very light agenda. Procedural stuff, pretty much. Uh, I will be presenting the strategic planning goals, uh, as a first read to you guys that month. That'll be a draft of the goals. Uh, right now that's outside of any personnel issues that might come up, so it should be pretty low key.
Is there any desire to approach the issue of the property on Plainview? Something's happening with the Town of Lisbon property, uh, corner of North Lake and, I mean, corner of Hickory and Lake Five. And that was not a bar this year. So that's going to be a very strong comparable for us.
Will it be a comparable, Dean? Cause we're next to the railroad tracks.
I, I think it will.
You think so?
Yeah, I think it will.
So we've talked.
It's, it's going to give us a, a better comparable than what the stuff on the east side of Lake Five.
I would agree. I would agree.
Cause it's a large.
How big is the parcel?
It's like 63 or 60.
63.
And how big is ours?
Uh, thirty...
Thirty-seven-two.
Two, thirty-seven-two? Thirty-seven point two.
Thirty-seven.
We're at 32.
Uh, we, you know, we can sit tight and wait and see what happens with that. Or we, we can discuss it again.
I mean, I guess I...
You desire to do that. We, you know, we started the discussion and talked about, yeah, that we wouldn't need it with having that, uh...
Yeah, I mean, at this point it's just an investment that doesn't really cost us much or anything, right?
Right.
Cause we don't pay tax, cause, you know, we're a school.
Are we getting, Bill, first stormwater on that? Are we getting a bill for stormwater on that?
I haven't.
No, we have never, I've never seen a bill for stormwater.
You will get a bill.
Because we are.
Well, so, I mean, I guess.
Is it on the board or something?
No, I'm on the cemetery. They're billing us for the cemetery for stormwater.
It doesn't, well, yeah, but it matters more if you wash away a cemetery than a, you know, a bill.
They're billing everybody. It's through the county. I'm just surprised they're not billing us for stormwater. What? Well, they just found us last year. So, we got last year's and then three years prior.
I've never heard of stormwater.
What?
Oh, no, we had it in New Berlin because we have storm drains where the water goes and it has to be processed.
I think it's like $60, $70 or something. It's based on the number of frontage feet.
It's probably where water goes.
And I, to me, it just doesn't make any sense. Semataries are usually pretty level, so, you know, you don't have a lot of water running off. But they're out to get, it starts through the county and then.
Okay. So, I mean, in terms of your original question, it's just an investment that's sitting there. I mean, it's not costing us any money. So, I mean, the place without an alley and value increases over time.
And I'm thinking because of that other property going on the market, we get some, get some idea of value. Some real value.
Yeah, that's true.
But just because we started the process, we kind of just left it hanging. I just wanted to know.
I mean, I guess perhaps the question is, do we envision the land value increasing more? Or do we envision that we would be able to invest that money in general, stock market, whatever you people do that are smart, and make more money that way?
Be real careful with that. Real careful. That's all.
Right.
Really walk the Shaw.
Yeah, I struggle with.
Right, or whatever savings mechanisms we have.
What are we doing?
What are we doing? Right, like, we don't need the money now. We have savings and also, so, right, I don't know.
Do you take a look at, you know, expanding your current property? About what's current on your footprint right now?
Well, yeah, you had Steve, I think, right, look at McGuire?
No, Wellspring. They took a look at our footprint and said.
And there are options.
We've got a lot of options on here. So, to say that we need that land for future expansion would be foolish. I mean, I.
No, but to save it as an investment for when we would need to expand here to use the profit from that eventually is.
Exactly. Or if, you know, does the district have an interest in, you know, making our land contiguous? You know, as we move forward? You know, we got, there's a parcel of property, one acre, 1.2 or whatever it is, that is right in the middle of ours. And as we know, we've got, you know, a facility need from a shed standpoint, from a facility maintenance building. And as we take a look at even from a maintenance side, is it what kind of education? You know, we start talking about more technology education.
We're actually probably going to farther look at the question.
Okay. Well, I'm just thinking more questions than I heard questions.
I just wanted to know what we want.
But I think the, Phil's question is, is what would be the use of the funds if we were to sell it? What would be a wise use of it? That would be work into that conversation.
Now, it's on to the conversation.
Yep.
But it is a late month, and I just wanted to throw that. If they wanted to make that discussion, we'll talk about that.
I mean, I guess we could put it on the agenda just to talk about it next month, just, you know, to.
Instead of talking about here.
Instead of talking about, we're supposed to be talking about what we want to talk about.
Yes, okay. Future meeting and agenda is a little discussed. Is there anything else? Okay, our July meeting, what's our, pleasure on that.
There was a conversation about a July 16 close session about a district evaluation, a district administrator evaluation, continuation for some things. So, that date is already set. We've got the board committed.
Do we know what the time?
If we wanted to go, we were going to, I was going to wait and see what time. Do we want to go at 6 o'clock here? And then, we could go into close after, or we could, because I think there's some.
The closed session will probably be like more than an hour.
Correct.
So, having that one second is probably better because then we can.
Correct.
Yeah, just go until they'll fall asleep.
Right. And we can set the closed session to begin immediately after open session. So, then we can tell whoever is invited to that closed session to meet us at next time or whatever it is. So, I would say if we start it at 6 o'clock, if that works for individuals.
Yeah, that's fine.
I would, again, I don't see a very heavy meeting outside of the discussion on the land. And I think that would make the best sense because I think a lot of encounters get pretty crazy in July. Okay? So, we'll go July 16, which is a Monday, at 6 o'clock, closed session, probably then, for district administrator evaluation. Now, August, I'm going to shoot out the date, start there. The Monday before our open house, which is the 27th, which is the last Monday of August. That's traditionally when we go. I mean, you can, we can go Monday, Tuesday, we go the week before, just to start the discussion.
I'll go town the week before that.
So, 27th would work for you.
The 27th would work for me, yes.
It's not ideal, but.
What about the 28th?
Yes, I think I have some going on.
The 28th is fine.
Are you ready?
28th?
I don't know at this point because of other stuff.
That was specific.
You might, I mean, we don't need to set stone today.
Tentatively.
Tentatively, okay. And then, we'll confirm that on the 16th.
Okay, tentatively, the 27th.
I'm sorry. Tuesday, the 28th, tentatively. We'll put that down as the date, and then we will confirm that date on the 16th.
And that was at 6:30?
That one, we go at 6:30, correct.
Okay, our normal annual meeting and budget hearing is on the 11th.
And that was set a year ago, so.
The 11th of August.
September's our annual meeting. Yep.
Contrary to a lot of the school district doing this area, I don't like annual meetings in August because that's vacation month.
Nobody's here, yeah.
And we like people to come to our meetings. We're not trying to discourage people to come to our meetings.
What, do we have a time for the 11th one?
7 o'clock.
7 o'clock. And there'll be budget hearing followed by annual meeting. If there's anything you guys need me to prepare for that 16th meeting, as in for the land purchase, just let me know. Because I can rehash the notes that I had before from Bill. I can't remember his name. But the realtor who was trying to sell. Why not?
Filmonett.
Filmonett? I need some, okay. I did reach out to him prior, November, February or something like that, March, it's a long time ago.
Trying to sell which one?
His late five on the railroad tracks.
Well, that's.
Oh, Dave Krebs.
Dave Krebs, thank you.
There is a bill on. Yes, Dave Krebs, really, yes. Yep, same company.
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second.
The motion is second. All in favor then say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. He is adjourned, all right.